And I don't know if we're gonna get that many tonight because you have a lot of important things to discuss tonight. So, thanks to all of you for being here. So, let's everybody rise and have a pleasure. My pleasure, Mr. President. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a great news for you that we've been doing tonight. We're gonna have various members of the city staff speaking to you about their levels of what they enjoy and what they do in the city. Let you know what is going on, including the one that everyone wants to hear, one of his personal lines he came up with. And after that, we're gonna have a discussion on talent issues, sixty-one and one oh one in our various entities in our community centers, our department, school district, the police department. And the county talk to you about the impact that these initiatives will have on you and maybe your water bill and your fire service and your police services, your city services. That should take up about thirty or forty minutes of spirit. We also have a very special guest tonight, Mr. Sam Madmet. Sam, are you here? Sam Madmet is executive director of the Colorado Municipal League. He's gonna be giving us an overview of those, who's done this all over the state over the past couple of months. He's gonna be there tonight. So, I guess to get started, we would ask Police Chief Phil Bachner to come say a few words.
Thank you. I wanna ask, um, is there food over there, drinks?
I don't eat like that, I got a big mouth. That only makes me sound strange. Alright, good evening, everybody. My name is Phil Bachner, I'm the chief of police here in Commerce City. If you have not met me before. This is Lieutenant Dave Covich standing next to the wall. He's actually our, gonna be our commanding officer to this substation that we just opened last week right here near one hundred and third Wallen. If you weren't there, I'm sorry I missed you. If you were there, thanks for coming, we had a great time. And you're gonna see a lot more police activity up here in terms of officers doing their work there, interviewing people. So, let me get it out of there a lot. We expect you to drop by, say hello. If you've got police business, please come and see us. It's one of the things that did part of our plans for the last three years. When I came on here in January two thousand eight, the command staff and I all sat down and we laid out a strategic plan. This substation is one of those things that was a top priority. We finally got it done. It wasn't, we didn't want to get it done sooner, but that's the way something worked out. There are a lot of logistics that take some money. We were lucky enough to get grants to do a lot of the interior work. Fortunate enough to work with Shane Holmes, Marty Zenzig, and they gave us a low market rate for our lease. So, a lot of things worked out to our benefit. But I just wanna talk a little bit. I know I've only had about seven minutes here, so I'm gonna talk fast and give you some time for some questions. Since I came on, we've done a number of new things. We reorganized the entire police department. We have hired twenty additional officers since January of two thousand eight. We have new police equipment on the street in terms of police cars. We have a larger presence up here in the North Range that we call Reunion and Bell Creek and Brontera, all the other north areas up here. You can see a lot of side activity. Our goal was to reduce response times, obviously emergency calls, priority one calls, but all the other calls. You know, priorities two, priorities three calls. It could be bark with dogs, it could be trash-related complaints, noise, those types of things. They're all important to us because they're important to you. It's a quality of life issue, and we wanna make sure that your quality of life in this city is as good as it possibly can be. We've started other programs within the agency. We've hired, if we didn't hire, we created two crime prevention officer positions. We got one in place last year. We got a second in place just a few months ago. Kayla Fender, maybe if you know Kayla, she was our first crime prevention officer. Tom Poe is our second. They're both assigned to the North Range Substation. That's where they work out of. They share duties between the residential area and the business area. Kayla actually handles everything on the north side and Tom handles everything on the south side. So, if you need assistance there, whatever it may be, please get ahold of them. Dave can get you their numbers, I think he probably has that. We've also started participating in other task forces around the metro area. We started participating in Metro Gang Task Force. One is a force multiplier. A lot of people ask us, well, why do you add an officer to a regional task force? Well, it's because all of a sudden, instead of having one officer assigned to that task force, we get to do a force multiplier. Now, we've got twelve people assigned to the Metro Gang Task Force because they come in, they assist us with issues, they share their intelligence with us, they share and assist us in problem solving. And we're evolving, you know, around all the gang issues. So, it's very, very good for us. We just became part of the East Metro Auto Theft Team, which is a new grant from the state. Douglas County, Raco County, Commerce City, Aurora, Colorado State Patrol make up that new auto theft task force. And we will primarily be working East Aurora, north of I-70, that part of Adams County, this whole side of the metro area again. Another force multiplier. We added a second big advocate for our victims and service victims of crimes. That second victim, that advocate was born in September the twenty-seventh. We also secured well over a million dollars in federal funds for additional police officers under the COPS grant. They're all on the street, they're all working except for one. That fourth one will start on September the twenty-seventh, and that officer should be out of training within about fourteen weeks. We are fully staffed. We have ninety-three sworn police officers, we have about twenty-five civilian employees. This has been the first time in the history of the police department that we are fully staffed with sworn personnel. That is our limit, that is what we're authorized to put on the street, and we are, we are full of. We are out there twenty-four seven, giving the best service that we can get. I can tell you that crime right now overall in the city is down about between five to six percent. Crimes against persons are very, very low in the city of Commerce City. And we're talking about assaults and robberies, sexual assaults, very, very low crime rate. Property crimes are down overall also. We did have a spike here recently, the last few weeks of trespassing automobiles. That means people are breaking into cars or getting into cars, stealing personal property, not stealing a car. Okay, but breaking and stealing personal property. I can tell you that one hundred percent of those crimes within the last few weeks could have all been prevented, folks. And I'm not here to lecture you, but I'm here to ask you for your help. Because as you lock your car, roll up your windows, taking your personal property out of your car, like your laptop, your purse, your wallet, your iPod, you know, and any other valuable property, it would not have been taken. One hundred percent of those crimes could have been prevented. We, you know, we have the crime prevention officers for a reason, to help you, to remind you to close your garage doors, to take the keys out of your car, to lock your cars. It will prevent a lot of crimes, alright? In a nutshell, I see Mr. Benson over here already give the way. So, that's about what I'm gonna do.
Before you leave, I want you all to know that he's also our neighbor. He also resides here in Moore's Hills.
That's right. So, I have a vested interest here, alright? And so, I wanna make sure police response is good, crime is low, and our quality of life is high all over the city. Certainly, this is my neighborhood too, and we want things to be done the right way for the best.
Could we make a couple of minutes for questions?
Certainly, yeah.
Yes, sir. I'm a volunteer at the Denver Police Department. I've been here about three years, and I heard we save, I guess, the city over three million dollars as a volunteer orientation. Does that help the Commerce City, the interested citizens? I know I'd rather do my time to my city.
Absolutely. We're right now, we are recruiting for volunteer programs. We've got an ad in the paper for additional volunteers on the victim advocate side. We're always looking for volunteers. It can be on the crime prevention side, it can be in the records unit, it can be almost anywhere. We don't have a police prevention officer program, but we're always looking for volunteers. Lieutenant Chuck Saunders, who will be back to work on September the twenty-seventh, is in charge of our volunteer programs, and he's gonna be pushing for more. We can leave you with his number. He just graduated from the FBI cabinet, and he's gonna be back to work. Okay? So, get ahold of Chuck, and we will put you for it.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Gutman, I live in Rainyland. I got a question for you. Couple days ago, I had a couple of interesting citizens knock on my front door trying to sell us an alarm system, asking a bunch of questions that they shouldn't be asking. So, when I and my two dogs shoot them away, they kinda, I would say suspiciously ran away. Has there been any associated home break-ins relative to people knocking on doors, trying to sell people stuff and asking questions?
Not lately. I don't know of any. Last year, we had a couple of, one suspicious character who was walking around the neighborhoods with a basketball, ringing the doorbell, you know, looking for people, and he was actually found with cases. But we haven't had any like that. If you have people like that, you know, when you can't solicit in the neighborhoods, call the police, call nine-one-one. You don't need any other number, just tell them if it's an emergency or not additionally, and they'll, they'll send an officer out. Answer any questions, give descriptions, vehicle numbers, whatever the case may be. We'll be there.
Yes, sir.
Somebody's out there friendly, maybe here using that as a prank.
Right.
Yeah, that was the same guy that you can see for a second.
Just call, and we'll send, we'll have a car out there, no contact. Unless there's some kind of, we have a question. I have to leave, I have to speak first because I actually sit on my homeowners association board, and we have a meeting today. I'll be here till then. Thanks.
I just wanted to, before we actually have such a come out and learn, introduce all of our council members. If you were here, you have Deputy Director JD Carson. Any other council members here? Jackson McCallum, Deputy Deputy Director.
Yes, next I would like to introduce to you, if you please come up, Mr. Tom Anker.
Can you guys hear me without the mic?
Sure.
For those that have just come in, there's twenty seats if you wanna take a seat. There's still something back, you won't push, you can sit in the front, but you're welcome to sit. I'm one of three deputies sitting in and in the city. I take care of the democratic mind before the external services departments. That's planning, public works, and parks and recreation. We've got a second deputy, she is, her name is Megan Nealan. She has the influence of human resources, computer IT, finance, marketing, operations, and the city police office. So, we kinda building up those duties and kinda helping each other out. I just wanna give you a few little updates of some highlights of things that are happening in the city and should be anticipated. We have the city in a much greater set. If you go down Highway Two, you're all well aware, we've got construction going on with ninety-six and Highway Two. That project is to turn the intersection of ninety-six Highway Two into something similar to what's at Engate Highway Two, with some left-hand turnbays, a quiet zone for the railroad, and some improvements on Highway Five and Highway Two on Ninety-six thousand. That project should be complete sometime towards the latter part of the spring of twenty eleven. So, you can periodically see some detour signs. I think right now, they've got a detour going through the three different lanes. That construction activity, if you've seen the signs of seek an alternative route, go to the work hours. You can go down the Highway V, get around that way, or go down Tower Road and get on the painting of ninety-six thousand. Two little general routes, some other nice mazes if you wanna ask me about those, I do those shows in the back. Hundred and Fourth Avenue, we finished one phase. The phase basically from Highway Two to E-470 is complete. There's still some touchless signs that they may be working on, but it's basically complete. The next phase is the intersection of Quinnt and Highway Five and Hundred and Fourth. That should be starting up sometime next spring. That is a project with some federal funds involved to move to happen and start. But there's public look standpoint, there's the two largest projects that are going on. We do have some CIT funds that we propose, but that's capital and physical project funds that we propose to the city council, which will be discussed during the budget. They'll try to give you some other projects like pavement improvement. We've got a project issued in the store portion of the city, Chip Seal, the Tri-Pax Neighborhood. So, things of that nature, trying to maintain the road so we don't have to be completely closed this summer. Parks and Recreation, there's a flyer on the table. We're opening up the Second Creek Regional Trail for ninety-six dabbling up to about a hundred and eight on Saturday, October twenty-ninth. I've heard some of the gridling prior to the opening. I've not had an opportunity to do that, but I hear it's gonna be quite a good trail. Some moves in the Buffalo Mesa area and down here along the Second Creek area as well. That's just a very phase of our regional trail system. The next phase is to hopefully be picking up further than Second Creek sometime in the future. We don't have that funding yet, and we don't have some way right away. But the Second Creek Trail should connect into the, right down the Marshall National Wildlife Refuge, which can take you down into a store portion of the city, and eventually connects you up to the Second Creek Trail, which connects to the South Plate Trail. So, it's really part of that regional trail system, the city's working on moving to give it its colors. And we can look at, obviously, if you're like me, you were impacted by the hailstorm. We anticipate, we estimate now that it's probably about thirty-one hundred to forty-five hundred roots that have impacted. We have about twenty-one hundred root improvements to date. City Council allowed us to hire two temporary roofing inspectors. That's all they concentrate on, they're doing about forty inspections a day. Our other inspection techs are doing now, they're doing regular inspections for one building and some of the commercial jobs going on, but they also pick up some of the roofing inspections. I have to applaud our building department. It was a day after that hailstorm, he was on the phone talking to Harbada, and rightfully saying, what did you guys learn last year? And what they brought back to him is get your temporaries set up to where you don't get behind the eight ball on roofing inspections. To put it in perspective, rightfully, there's ninety gates behind with three thousand permits waiting before they hire the temporary roofing inspectors for the roots. We're running right now about forty-five days behind with those two inspectors, which is pretty, it's not enough to add up early. So, I think we've done a really great job. Some of the questions I've heard come through the great line of them. Why do we have to have ladders up? It's because we've actually, lessened some of our requirements and we've done in the past for this hailstorm response, is we've outfitted trucks for ladders, but that gets into the first floor. We're asking for the contractors for the green ladders for the second story, because those are so many different configurations, it's hard for the city to have ladders for every situation. And we've also instituted a program where if a contractor has a group of inspections in an area, we'll schedule all those inspections at one time with one inspector. So, while he's out, he's just going from house to house to house. So, hopefully that has helped, and it's helped you guys that you know, know to do your roof repairs. And when the other question came up earlier this season that I wanted to address was as to view of windows. If your windows need to be replaced, you do not need a permit if you're not replacing the frame. But if you're replacing the frame, you gotta come in the building, in the building division. I would say if you've ever got a question on what should, what needs to be done with the building, call the building division, number is on the website, they'd be really happy to answer your questions. And then one last thing, we've seen a good sketching, slight increase in building permits for residential this year. We're at about two hundred and five senior family building permits this year to date. Last year, the entire year, we did a hundred and forty yards, and that's been a good trend. We hope it'll continue through the third and fourth quarter this year. And that's all I had to impress, just to know, don't get into that, but maybe we'll have to stage. Yes, sir. On the freeway trails, are bicycles allowed?
Bicycles aren't allowed, yes.
Are there any plans to expand Tower Road to Fourteenth Road, like in Denver and Aurora, and access to Paint Boulevard to the south side from any other area that's different? Which I have to take every single time.
I can say yes, I cannot tell you when yet.
Cause I asked that question three years ago at a planning meeting, and I wish a lot of the people in the room at that time were concerned about that, and there was no change in that period of time.
We are, to tell you what we have done, which you can't see yet, and won't see. Last year, we asked our federal legislation for some earmark funds for Bold Tower and for Pinnable of our back ramp. We were not successful, so we'll try again this year. The Paintia ramp is part of an agreement we got with E-470 to where if by twenty-twelve that ramp is not built, E-470 is supposed to build it and pay for it. The agreement doesn't specify when. So, what the city is doing, and I was not, I was not even in the city at that time, so I take no responsibility for that agreement, but I do applaud for putting the foresight in to have someone on the local site, the city, to go in from the late year. I had a meeting today with E-470. We're trying to work with, how can we all work together to get that ramp in place and get it in place soon? E-470 and Mr. Vincent sits on the board representing Commerce City is taking a look at that, and they told me today they will start at least showing it in their capital improvement plan of the nine hundred projects, so it's not a surprise, they're aware. It's also in, not in Commerce City's jurisdiction, it's in Denver's jurisdiction, and it's in the area that is controlled by Denver National Airport and the FAA. So, we need to work with them as well. So, in the next year, we will, and we have been having discussions with DIA, we've been having discussions with Denver, and saying, how can we make this happen? So, we are taking a look at it, we just don't have a timeframe yet. On Tower Road from eighty fifth north to Hundred and twentieth, that project's about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy million dollar project. And it's to take it from two lanes that is now, we're gonna take the time to activate, at least our engineers might be, like, six lanes. Because the traffic is already there for two lanes at a level of service that is not acceptable. So, we're starting to take a look at power ways that we can continue to ask for federal funds, what do we need to do to set ourselves up to get that federal funding, and also work with Denver. It also benefits out of county and our mind, we think it's gonna be right with our mind. So, how can we turn this into a regional project? Everyone's got, is tied on funds. So, we hear you, we feel the pain, I drive, I live up here, I have to drive, so I understand it as well. So, we are taking a look at it. One of the CIT projects that we put in for the budget is to let us have some funds through some past due dollars that we get from the county on transportation, to start taking a look at either Tower Road or the other road we're getting pressure on is to extend Ninety-six Avenue to Tower. So, to start taking a look at that, but it's just a little bit of money to start looking at what the alignment is, to see what could some of the environmental studies look like, so that we can set ourselves up, when we can get a larger chunk of money to have. Yes, sir.
Yeah, why is it you can't seem to get a grocery store built up here anywhere?
Brittany Morris, thanks for answering that, and takes more of us, is what could look at the dollar, but she's better at what we're up to.
At this time, we need to cut off the questions. I guess you're in.
Yes, I will say until the end.
Yeah. We're gonna make some kind of a schedule to try to get out of here in a short period of time, so we really have to, you know, we have other questions. Two time after me. As I said, I'm on the board of E-470, we've got this background, we've made substantial progress. We get that ramp set down Tower onto West End and Painta. It's about an eleven million dollar project, but E-470 is on the way for that. And the contract that we signed with them in ninety-five, they have to keep it going, so that's where we are, we're working. As Tom said, there's no exact time report, but the law will impose a reasonable time. And I made it clear that twenty years is not a reasonable time, that one year is not a reasonable time. Eight, somewhere around three or five years is going to be a reasonable time. So, I would like to introduce Dominic Moreno, who's one of our councilmen from Ward One. Does anybody else have any other council members? Okay, well, I'm trying to speculate what you have.
Uh, yes, and like I said about the chief, also Tom is one of our neighbors as well. Next, I would like to ask Brittany Morris. She's Director of Economic Development, come forward. And I know you're gonna get a lot of urgent sort of questions, because I have to grab twenty minutes either to Commerce City, Thornton, or the Breck. And let's just take a second, could you get everyone to come fill in in the front seat, you know, just came up, while we present for us? There's some stalls in the back too, if you don't want to spend the time. Alright? Good evening. Thank you all for coming out here. I think we've done an initial count, we have about seventy people in the room, and that's pretty amazing. You know what, I might try to speak without the mic and see the work.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Alright, great. Hi, I'm Brittany Morris, I'm the Director of Economic Development for Commerce City, and I have a scout group that works for you. What can we work on? We work on three arcs. We recruit new business to Commerce City, we retain existing business. We are home to about twelve different businesses in Commerce City that we want to retain and keep. And we also attract people. The last all, which I'll get to later, is for the election. All of you are here for questions. I don't know how much you know, but in April, Commerce City, the council passed the first ever Economic Development Teaching Plan in city history. We're about to turn fifty in a couple of years, and this is the first time we strategically look at what are our opportunities, weaknesses, strengths, and threats as we lead to economic development. This plan included feedback from the community, from the citizens. We also had a technical advisory group that helped us, city council and city staff. It was passed in April unanimously by city council, and identified twenty-five different strategies, and in that overall, some different action items, and this will basically lead us into the future. Part of that teaching plan was creating a very aggressive incentive package to spur business and development growth in the city. The council also recently passed that incentive program in Vegas. We have since been promoting the package, and I want to see who all in here has applied for an incentive. You know that part of the incentive package is for root preparation. So, you, if you have prepared your root because of the hailstorm, you are eligible to receive ten percent sales and new packs free and fifty percent speed increase for the work that you did on your root. I have left copies of the incentives applications, please take one, fill it out, send it to Commerce City Economic Department, because you'd like to give a reading to you, but then not go to your contact or disclose to the whole town. This package did not only touch residents, we also have incentives for new business, for existing business, and that we also have incentive for retailers. Can anyone tell me how many millions of dollars leave our city every year in U.S. economy?
Fifty-eight million.
They're all shocking stuff, or else.
They are, they are.
Fifty-eight million.
We scaled gap analysis last year that sent you exactly where you are taking the dollars. Fifty-nine million dollars worth of grocery sales every year are leaving Commerce City and going to Denver. They're going to Aurora, they're going to Georgia. We look at this as a fifty-nine million dollar opportunity for grocery stores and retailers. And I've touched, we have been helping the market promoting not only the fifteen, fifty-nine million dollar opportunity, but now, because of city council, we have the incentives to that. While I cannot share with you individual conversations with groceries, because that would potentially adversely impact those conversations, I can tell you the package was very well received. We and we go to the International Council of Shopping Services Conference in Vegas. This is a conference where every single major retailer across Colorado, the nation, and feeding the world, comes to our city community. We take a contingency. This year, Tom went, I went, and actually I remember Marley went to Paul. And Michelle Phil in my office, she's the Economic Development Professor specializing in economics. And we sold the fifty-nine million dollar outlet. And we sold the fifty-nine million dollar opportunity and our incentive package very well received. And I actually, I brought with me some of the information that we present to retailers so you can get some information, and I want you to all memorize that. Fifty-nine million dollar first opportunity. We have eighty-nine hundred homes, homes in the northern range, we have a population of about sixteen thousand in the north range of the city, and in the northern trade area because retailers look phenomenally limited. We have twenty-five thousand residents leading to shop at this year. So, please memorize that, spread it amongst your community, let them know that we are out there. We are promoting these statistics, and we believe that we will reach those incentives. Um, how many millions of dollars are leaving in feeding sales? Eighty-eight million dollars. So, we have, we have a very aggressive strategy to get restaurants into our city well. We just joined the Colorado Restaurant Association. In a prior life, I was an advocate for the Colorado Restaurant Association at the local government level. We joined the restaurant association, we're networking with individual restaurants, and we also are promoting that eighty-eight million dollar opportunity to us. All right? Any questions on that as well, you're welcome?
Well, I know that Walmart was the host of Great Dad, I've heard like February was June, and therefore, nothing happened.
I was kidding there. So, I'm sure you've heard that Walmart's committed their building plans, make this one, we're quite excited about that. So, many buildings may have major statues about, it means that they're, they own, they own the property at Hundred and Old Tower. They own it, and now they have plans to submit them to the state. We since made that, have been working with Shea Commercial, Shea Homes, developers. Do you get an answer? When are you looking for? We now have sent a formal letter, which everyone is aware, we've sent a formal letter to Walmart demanding that, "When are you looking for?" And again, in a previous way, I've worked with Walmart, so, and I've never seen a lot of response. At the same time that building plans were submitted, we were getting the new Director of Economic Development. I know there was some miscommunication going on, however, we still believe that Walmart holds right now, they own the land, Walmart's not letting them. Um, we, now they've submitted building plans, they're out there, we're just trying to get a chance to, and all we can act towards, from lack. I'm sure you understand the city needs during difficult economic times for certain businesses with already its own, such a significant retail business. The citizens of Commerce City, in reunion facilities, have been living in this area for almost a decade without easy access to necessary goods and services, and I believe they deserve this. Forgive my insatience, but I think that the residents of the northern range have been giving mixed messages long enough, and therefore, their answers in a simple reply is more convenient. And I would be first to tell you when we're back from this. I usually don't play this mic, but now I am. That answer is good. You know there's a silver lining? They have a two million dollar incentive that council passed in two thousand and seven, two million dollars. They must be open and ready for this, open to the public by January first, twenty-twelve. If they are not in the balance, by the beginning of April, they will not be there. Therefore, we are going to be able to do that.
That's a good one, I mean, what's the best thing to be major, I mean, okay, well, sad, so what? But that's, that's too many to go away.
And, see, I mean, however, there is a layer of professionalism. We are now writing letters, we're copying their legal handful, we're notifying them of the impending deadline. I can tell you, when we negotiate incentives in the future retailers, we probably will not have a five-year rate of growth, we can watch if we're, with, you know, understanding the market, it's never been time to figure out how long it takes, but five years' work.
Do you know, do you see, what are you doing in building apartments and special meetings on Walmart?
On Walmart? That's part of the two-way.
Good.
They are, they are. So, we would love to have that conversation. Once we hear that, we would love to have a conversation on smaller stores. In fact, that was announced this week, if we did create a dentist's, and a liquor store's in a one-mile span, would not be a success, that getting a grocery store.
When I see a nail place, and if we say there's a hundred thousand people that live here, only fifty percent are women, and maybe only one percent use a nail, we can afford, for society to have that kind of stuff, why aren't we successful there and not successful in what we really need?
There are different types of retailers. We are focused on making this a true sustainable, and a available community, not only needs the Walmart grocery store, now we need some more, and even nail place, and even liquor store. We work very closely with our developers on filling these spaces with the needs of people. I can tell you that when the grocery store comes in, or the Walmart comes in, there are several different retailers. Walgreens, the one that's, the one that's, I don't know, Chamber, I'm going to tell it, they're waiting for one of those to pop, and then they go. So, right now, it's a little bit of economy, the fact that there are some retailers surviving, and the liquor store is the first one that's going to survive, but there are very different things that, and we do need to follow.
Could you make a comment, please?
Um, I feel this way, and I'm going to share it with you. I feel that King Stupers, Albertsons, and Safeway are bullish, because if they would build out here, I really do feel it's one of the number one selling grocery stores in the area, and she has one of her, I have to say, we have Mobbie, we have, we have that one time, when the builders, they developed with a donation plan, and the two million dollar incentive package, they turned it down. I don't know what else to do, and I just wanted to share this, you know, wholehearted information and the way I feel, so passionate about it. Thank you.
I would, I would say it's safe to believe that no one wants to come in this area because Walmart has space right over there, so they're just waiting for Walmart to come in. So, with this incentive package, I would say it's probably safe to say that we won't have anything till January twenty-twelve.
Depends on which grocery you are using. There are grocers in the marketplace that look at Walmart as competitors, they are stronger than here, and they will flat out, they do not hear that Walmart owns the former Alhambra, they are still looking like they are.
By the time we have a question, so, we'll be at this time, we'll be able to answer some questions. You know, we got one after you, what, what do you think, sir?
I might say, I attended for the past five days a company called Aviation as a Catalyst for Economic Development. I know we saw that a lot of our conversations on retail, because it is and continues to be the number one priority in United States. However, we are, through our strategic points, trying to create opportunities for primary employers in the city. And aviation as a leader of development is the way of improvement. Like you said, five days, talking about how great this community is, and how accomplished we have been looking at next to the airport, you're not even able to be walking to that. And ordering the airport to the west, and to the north, is an incredible opportunity to create economic development. Hospital, leisure, manufacturing, manufacturing, made, we talked about it, and it's an incredible , sorry. Just in case anybody remembers, economic development is our number one priority, is the council number one priority, the staff number one priority. We get pretty, all the cooperation in the thing that she needs, for her job, because our number one priority, so, I guess, next time after meeting. I left my card over there. So, long story short, I replied over there, I'm not sure what story I'm reporting, so I might sneak off, but I did leave my card, and we are going live with a Twitter feed, if you want to keep in tune to what Commerce City Economic Development loves to, www.wpt.com/ c3e, that goes live October one, and sign your email out, because we go live with the Economic Development newsletter, October fifth.
Now, please, everybody, we have to fill in your email sheets, is everyone of you available to fill in your email address on the sheets? We just like to get a good email, by someone starts sending out a newsletter for Warren too, Brittany's going to be able to use it for a lot of different reasons, so, all of you could fill in your email address on those sheets. Also, I want to introduce another elected official, who's going to join us, that's Larry Pace, who's Adams County Commissioner, and he's going to be talking to us later on the Engel Act of sixty-sixty-one-one-on-one on Adams County, so we'll see you in a little bit. I guess next on our list, we have a representative of the school district of Twenty-Seventh Day, we're going to have two representatives of the school district speaking tonight. The first would be Janet Wyatt, who's the attorney for Twenty-Seventh Day, talking to you about the upcoming mill levy matter that's going to be on the ballot this fall. I want to explain to you something about what's called the Fair Campaign Practices Act. We can't at a city meeting urge you to vote for or against, we need to get the ballot measured, so she's not going to do that, she's just going to give you the facts about this is what will happen if you vote for it, there's what will happen if you don't vote for it. And again, later on in our discussions of the sixty-sixty-one-one-on-one, it will be the same way, but I can't tell you that, but with regard to that, the city can take a decision, and the city council of Commerce City voted unanimously to oppose sixty-sixty-one and one-on-one. We can take a city position, but we can't do it individually in a meeting like this. So, Janet.
I'll bring out my old teacher's voice, if you're available here. I do have a PowerPoint that will make, assistance book that will make, I, what, we will be visual, very clear, very easy, and you can make your own opinions on that. As Mr. Vincent said, I'm not allowed to, much if I may have an opinion, I'm not allowed to share that, or try to encourage you one way or the other. So, the PowerPoint is factual based, nothing that you couldn't find on the CDU website on a given day, and I do have some statements that I will share for you from the pro and commons, comments from individuals in the community, as part of preparing the ballots for the county.
Mr. Cordell, we've just been taking a few minutes to set up the campaign, so, we'll move on and call you in just a few minutes after this, that's, we've just been taking a few minutes on the campaign. So, I guess at this point, we will all get into the impacts of the sixty-sixty-one-one-on-one. How many of you have seen any advertising, you know you've been about the sixty-sixty-one and one-on-one? I was going to say somebody had one forty liter tonight, you're going to be fully aware of what could happen to the city, to the state, to the county, and everybody else in the city. So, to start that off, I recall Sam M. M., the Executive Director of the Colorado Municipal League, he's going to give you an overview of reasons, we're going to have specific people from the school district, the market, the police, and the city, and the county, to tell you exactly how any of the impact goes in. For Sam?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? How's everybody doing? Great. Well, I appreciate the invitation to be here tonight, and spend a few minutes with you, so I want to thank the city for inviting me, and I appreciate it a lot, a lot, and I appreciate all your interest in what's going on in this great community. I'm the Executive Director of an organization called the Colorado Municipal League, and we're a statewide association of two-hundred-and-sixty-four cities and towns in the state, with around three thousand local governments in Colorado, each tied to local counties, municipalities, special districts, and school districts are represented by individual membership associations. So, we're the association representing the interests of municipal government. So, I work a lot with collective officials, I work a lot with staff people, and with people who serve on boards and commissions, in some capacity with their own city or town. And I've been on the league staff for thirty-one years, I started this job when I was six-five-three-hundred pounds. Good, I got some people, my best material for the night. And so, I've been around, I've been around the state quite a bit. I know every town and city and coffee shop, and town hall, and courthouse, and county road, and shortcut between all four corners of the state, and I enjoy meeting with people like you, and I enjoy going out to all of our great communities around the state. So, I know Colorado pretty well, and I know Commerce City really well, because I've always spent a lot of time with the folks who serve this community, and I must say, I was very impressed with some of the presentations I heard here tonight. This is, this has been a city that has clearly been on the move, and this is a city that looks to the future. And when I mention that tonight, I want you to think about just that one concept, that in the context of these three ballot measures. And with that, I've got about ten minutes, you can be quick over to it, and it's individual talk from their own perspectives about the measures. Now, in our state, under our state constitution, we have, since you're already set up, you want to, you want to practice, or you want to, nothing to, how do you want to do this? I don't want to break up this, well, yeah. Yeah, you want, you want to do the, all right, but, thanks very much, I'm done. I wanted to get home and split the rock, you were going to do it anyway. So, I want the school district to do their little presentation, because it'll go better that way, and I'll get back, and I got a few other jokes I can do. I won't go away. Oh, you're welcome, Janet.
So, me again, not really as funny as she is, um, you can give some lessons, I guess, from, but, as I mentioned, do twenty, Janet Wyatt, I'm the Chief Global Officer of School District of Twenty-Seventh Day, um, one of our schools here, obviously. And what I have is a few slides, Mr. Vincent, he's a tight schedule, so I will do my best to follow those that we, for those of you that may not have seen us, this is the school district at the Hall, it's a very large area, we are down actually, left quadrant area there, Commerce City area, so we encompass about two-hundred-and-fourteen square miles, a very large area, including Adams Wells, Loopdale County, or right in Commerce City and so, we reach out and all kinds of different directions. We're still considered one of the fastest stories of school districts across the state, once we've been in the area for a while, we have slowed down slightly in our growth from, say, five years ago, when the area was part of that massive growth that we were experiencing. However, this year alone, we did increase by seven-hundred-and-eighty students, so our growth has slowed compared to what it was a few years ago, we are still growing in the area of seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred students per year. Uh, once we have been in the area for a while, we have slowed down slightly in our growth from, say, five years ago when the area was part of that massive growth that we were experiencing. However, this year alone, we did increase by seven hundred and eighty students. So our growth has slowed compared to what it was a few years ago. We are still growing in the area of seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred students These are some projected growth numbers. We're currently at around sixteen thousand to seven seventy-six, something like that. And by twenty fourteen, we are expected to grow and again, you can see the bottom there, the percentage is kind of fluctuating, but ultimately within about the next four years to be projected to be at over eighteen thousand students. In twenty years, um, so someone who may have young children or younger grandchildren, when those people are graduating, our district projected to be in the area of thirty-nine thousand. So as I mentioned, the growth in the area has slowed due to the economy due to some increase in new housing, those kinds of things, but yet we're still growing. Like Commerce City, like other industries that you may be involved in, state budget crisis and the cuts that have come about for the last year or so, um, have greatly affected the school districts. And for those of you that may not be completely familiar with how school districts are funded, there are three areas that come together to make a first people funding a lot. And that's what this slide shows. The line portion that is in the blue comes from, sorry, I'm going to get the background in my head. Sorry, wait after that. The blue portion is the piece that comes from the state. The red portion is the piece that comes from local property taxes. You get those together and they roughly balance out, that's the state equalization figure that you may have heard of. And then the yellow line on the top is what you, the taxpayers throughout all the districts choose or not to do what's called the mill levy override, add additional funds to the school district to be available for the students. And as you can see, you can barely see the yellow line in twenty seventh day compared to other schools across that area. Where I tend to get lost when I look through the time period, I've been in the district for seven years. If this portion of the budget pays and I start to automatically, I start to get confused. But if you look like, if you look at that compared to other districts, we're sitting at a monthly sixty-eight hundred dollars per student total. Other districts are over eight thousand. If you're not familiar with what the mill levy override is, it is a tax that you choose to impose on your own tax person, um, that can fund a variety of different public things such as culture, obviously, fire and grease, libraries, streets, water and sewer systems, those kinds of things. A mill is equal to approximately one, one thousandth of a dollar, okay, or one percent of the taxable assessment of your home. So for example, what we are proposing would increase your public tax amount approximately thirty-two dollars for the sub one hundred thousand dollars of value to. So in this area, the average home is two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars or thirty-two, sixty-four, there's a map that way. Here's a slide that will show that as well. So that's our, that's our starting point right now. Currently, that mill levy, that yellow piece of that funding formula amounts to, in twenty-seventh day, additional fifty-five dollars per student. Long time ago, when the mill was funded, the number of students compared to the dollar amount that was passed at that time, equal a lot more per student, it's been made with a seven hundred and fifty dollars per student. The dollar amount collected has not changed, the number of students have grown, but the dollar amount per student continues to decrease. Does that make sense? So with that said, we can see that our mill levy funding on a particular basis is by far embarrassingly low compared to all of the schools in our district. Commerce City, for example, has additional funding and maybe a seven hundred and twelve dollars per student that they've chosen to.
I see.
Through the taxes they've chosen to impose have given the students an additional seven hundred and twelve dollars in funding over that state and property tax dollar amount that I showed you last night. So you can see the numbers they, they are what they are, and you see where we lie in Commerce City's other areas of the economy. These are some impacts that we let students have had over the last year as a result of the state budget crisis that occurred. They gave us two point two million dollars at the beginning of this one year, nine ten. And they said, but you probably don't want to spend it, they come back and ask for that in January or December. So I was like, so this budget year, they reduced that section, the blue piece, by four point four seven dollars per student. We call it, that was a financial fact, we all have had, and just, uh, it was down to six hundred and dollars per student, five dollars less than what we had on mine. And as a result of that decrease in funding last year, and some of you may well have been affected directly by this, we laid off eighty-one certified staff members and teachers and sixty-four classified staff, those who need secondary office support, they're supporting their classroom, those kinds of traditional. And these hours were another number of conditions. So that funding has a very immediate, funding reduction has a very immediate, um, you know, impact on our staffing, you know, it also provides to your students. And like I said, the levy override can request increased property tax or additional whatever it is. The board determines what they asked for. That can be asked for them for a variety of reasons. In our case, it would go directly to support academic achievement programs, um, levations and care, standardization, security and reduction, as well as not income soon, eventually cost the weapons. Actually, I have often played with anyone, why is it new? Actually, I would not, uh, my colleagues will, I believe. So I can get a comment. We are asking for an increase of four mills that would generate approximately three point two million dollars. As I said, if that election is successful, we're going to be able to rehire some of the teachers that will lay off or contain current teachers that we have, uh, renewed class size, uh, instructional materials, and we may be able to create learning environment for the students. And we want to say, we will make sure that we have a good picture of, um, mill requests before, three point two million, we will definitely generate revenue, and the different impact based upon the assessed value of your home. It was from two hundred thousand dollar home of sixty-three up to a four hundred thousand dollars going from the next on the game, it was not on the table. So the business owners that are associated in the freight, so impact is more, but that will change on second day. Oil will change, everything doesn't change, um, the free business is valued at two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per year, up to a million dollars, it's really over a thousand dollars. Yes, I will stop on this slide. If that mill levy gets passed, it will go from fifty-five dollars per student, which I said before, only to two hundred and seventy-six dollars. And so you can see, with that successful override, we're still drastically below our neighboring schools and we can additional funding that we need to provide here. Okay? Now, make sure I read the letter of the law. That, as I said, you can find that information anywhere, it's already published, it's not going to be in the media. Um, having prepared our ballot issue, we received one statement in support of the ballot issue and one statement against the ballot issue. I'll share some excerpts from each of those statements so that we have a better picture of what we have. Um, the support of the proposal, the person said, the levy override will guard against writing class sizes, uh, device of purpose and maintain instructional materials, pointing out that the community is the fastest, one of the fastest organizations in the state. And even with that said, we want the law to stay in the state and we have a little close local override that should be provided for. The person that filed the comments and gave our proposal believes that the district is unwilling to live within its community, that this override will increase the burden of taxpayers, that we have, um, no accountability that is built in to our customers, and that this is not the time for a package, that we should really be more of less, and that it's time for the district to improve our productivity, improve our productivity, and get unnecessary progress without making taxpayers continue to, um, the only thing that came out in the seat of the arm of the ballot. Thank you, Janet. And her associate will be here afterwards for anybody who has any questions. Now we're going to bring you back, Sam, some more joke telling.
No. Anyway, I'm going to talk fast. I'm going to take about ten minutes. Is there others in the room here that want to talk on the civics and civilize their local governments? Of course, we're all interested in your questions and, um, take a couple of questions and post on them up here as well. Okay. So, uh, we have an interesting way of making public policy in Colorado. At the city level, we can do it through the actions of city council and dock ordinances. And if the state legislates at a state level through the legislature, when they pass a bill, it becomes law. But there's another way we make law in Colorado that's been around since nineteen twenty, it's in our state constitution and allows you and other citizens who were registered electors in the state to write governmental changes to the state constitution, state law, called initiative process. Now, the legislature, uh, wants to amend the constitution or pass along to the voters the review of a particular law, that's called a referendum. When citizens write the changes to state constitution or the changes to the state statutes, that's called an initiative. I just like to lay that out, sort of civics one oh ones. When you hear about these terms, you have a little better idea about what people are talking about. Now, when the legislature writes something and asks you to look at it and vote on it, that referendum has a letter. And so I think there are three measures the legislature has placed on the ballot. Those are the letters. The ones that are numbered have been placed on the ballot by citizen petition, and there are six of those, and I'm focused on three of them tonight. Uh, in order to get a measure on the ballot, you have to turn in a requisite number of signatures, and in Colorado, that's in the constitution, that's five percent of the voters who voted in the last election for secretary of state, that's in the state constitution. And right now, it's about seventy-six thousand signatures, different type. As a practical matter, when you can turn in petitions, votes, gifts, you turn in far more than necessary in order to stand challenges. In case of three measures we're going to talk about, I think proponents turned in to about a hundred and forty thousand signatures each, so they qualify on the ballot sometime at the end of last year. Uh, numbers sixteen sixty-one are called amendments because they amend the constitution. Proposition one oh one is called a proposition because it amends say law. So again, when you hear these terms kicked around, that's what that's all about. And the numbers are assigned by the, uh, secretary of state's office based upon the procedure of say law. So that's kind of background on, on the issue, and they'll be up on the ballot November second, um, and we're going to focus in on these. So let me talk first about amendment, uh, number sixty. Amendment number sixty deals with the property tax. Amendment sixty-one deals with debt financing, and proposition one oh one deals with a variety of changes to various taxes at the state and the local level. The other thing I want to mention is that these three measures affect all local governments in the state, whether you're fire protection district, whether you're the city of Commerce City, or Adams County, or the school district, as well as the state government itself. So everyone is covered by these at the local government level and at the state government level, and they're affected in very different ways. And we don't have time to get into all of the ways local governments are affected. These things have some complexity to them, and there are various questions around interpretations on them. So I can stand here and do my best to explain them. It doesn't always mean I understand what I'm talking about because I don't understand all of the various impacts. Amendment number sixty deals with the property tax. I hope everybody knows what property taxes are, right? Okay. Oh, yes. Good. All right. And it affects the property taxes in a variety of different ways. Uh, it is overall intended to reduce property taxes that residents, residential property owners and business property owners pay. And it does it in a variety of different ways, and we do not have time to get into all of the details. So one of the things you're going to have to do, uh, as you get your blue books in the mail here over the next few weeks that are written by the state, explaining the measures and having the measures themselves reprinted, you got to read this stuff. If you want to make, uh, an intelligent decision, I'm really asking you as, um, informed citizens to read the material and start to read some of the, um, communications on this stuff. One of the things that amendment sixty does in the context of schools, and we'll hear more about this in a minute, uh, it requires the schools, school districts, over a period of time to cut their property tax that isn't pledged any sort of debt in half over time as tax relief. That's not inconsiderable. And it requires the state to backfill, as a term that we use up at the capital, uh, to reimburse the school districts for that reduced revenue. Now, keep that in mind as it relates to another measure, one oh one, I'm going to talk about in just a minute. It also requires things that we call legally enterprises, which is a term that is used in the constitution, in another part of the constitution, spelling out how local governments and state can raise revenues and spend those revenues on services. It requires enterprises like a water or sewer utility or a housing authority, those are some examples among many, to now start to pay a property tax to the local government in which that other local government is located because they don't now pay property taxes. And when they do that, based upon some sort of a formula that assesses how much property tax they are paying, then that other local government receiving that additional revenue has to reduce their property tax by a requisite amount. Uh, this is going to be quite confusing, but what it means for a water utility which provides services to a city, as an example, they're now going to have to start paying property taxes to, uh, the city. And the revenue that the city receives, they have to reduce by a requisite amount. Sounds like a pretty good plan, but you step back for a minute and two things will begin to happen. For individuals who idolize their tax deductions for federal income tax purposes and property taxes are a deduction that we can claim, we begin to lose that deduction. Similarly, the water authority has to recruit its revenue somewhere to continue to provide its services. So we anticipate rates will begin to increase on the utility side of the legislature. Uh, you'll have to draw your own conclusions. There are some other aspects of this, uh, as it relates to the property tax that hopefully we can get into more in the discussion. That's a quick overview of two quick bullet points on number sixty. Now, number, and this is the constitution. Now, number, and this is a constitution, I, I want to just say to you that when something is put into the constitution, that's a higher legal threshold, much more difficult to change or modify, and the only way to modify it is if the legislature can do so, and if the language is written quite narrowly, as these appear to be written, the legislature's ability to do that is limited, so the other alternative is to litigate and bring matters up to the Colorado Supreme Court, and I suspect you'll see that. Number sixty-one deals with how the state and the local governments in Colorado issue debt, uh, a general obligation bond, a revenue bond, other kinds of long-term financing for capital improvements, under number sixty-one is much more limited. At the state level, it's not only limited, it's prohibitive expressly in the future. That is to say, the way the measure is written, the state of Colorado state government is prohibited in the future from issuing various forms of debt and loans, uh, and if, uh, sixty-one passes, will be the first state in the union, I believe I'm correct in this, uh, to have that kind of restriction imposed upon the state. Uh, and so, uh, that is, uh, an issue that the state is gonna really be challenged with as they consider how to do long-term capital financing. Now, at the local government level, debt financing isn't eliminated, but it is significantly limited by virtue of more constricted limitations on the amount of debt that can be issued, and on limitations on the type of debt that can be, uh, issued. May I give you one example? A rural fire protection district, as one example, needs a pumper truck, and, uh, it's a common practice, as it is in the business sector, to lease equipment, uh, they don't have the cash at hand to pay for the truck, uh, out of pocket, so they lease it, very legitimate, uh, and it's a commonly accepted, uh, type of financing. Under sixty-one, those now have to be voted on, and under sixty-one, as it also is with number sixty, only at one time each year, in November, at the general election. So you can't even answer the voters at your regularly scheduled question, uh, this question, you have to wait until that one time during the year, when every other local government will be doing the same thing. Uh, and that is problematic. There are many other issues, uh, of concern with sixty-one, in the way in which the language is written on restricting loans, and what a local government can do in terms of loan authority. I listened with great interest to Brittany, who did terrific job, uh, explaining to you some really neat things that this city is trying to do in the way of economic development incentives. There is a legal question, there are shades of gray, not everything is the color of black and white. I tell that to my kids all the time, you know, you gotta deal with the shades of gray, it's not a yes or no, uh, and, um, and in this case, the shades of gray. We don't know whether economic development incentives as a loan may somehow be restricted in the future, and, uh, and we're gonna have to examine, uh, if this passes, whether the kind of intriguing approach that Commerce City is taking to jumpstart the local economy here, and other cities are doing similar kinds of things around the state, can continue, and practices continue. I don't know, yeah, there's a question about it. Last but not least is one oh one. Now, the first two were changes to the constitution. One oh one is a change to state law, so arguably, the legislature could, uh, perhaps consider changing the law, but, uh, I think politically, they're gonna not, because they're reluctant to change, uh, measures adopted by the citizens. This, adopt this affects a number of taxes. Let me start with going back to the school district, incidentally, and again, I'm giving you a little snapshot here, so I apologize. One of the things that it does is reduce the income tax rate by about twenty-five percent over a time period of several years. Uh, and, uh, this is going to cost the state, when that rate is reduced twenty-five percent, a little over a billion dollars in state revenue. That sounds like a good deal, if I'm gonna get some money back in my pocket, and this is fundamentally what you all have to think about when you all vote. The question of tax relief, at what cost? Here's the at what cost in the equation. Remember I told you earlier about the property tax impact on schools, uh, in terms of having the bill letting and the requirement on the state to backfill the schools? On the, on the other hand, the state's gonna lose this amount of revenue. How are they gonna possibly backfill the schools? And if the school districts in Colorado think, and those of us who follow school finance, and the challenges that school districts face, have enough challenges on their hands already, with the manner in which certain state funds have been cut the last couple of years, I really can't even begin to figure out how on earth, uh, we're gonna, uh, deal with this riddle between a loss of revenue at the state level from the income tax reduction, and the requirement to reimburse the school districts. Now, let me talk about something that has been controversial. I get it, uh, and that is the issue of vehicle registration fees. Now, in Colorado, we've had for decades a mechanism in the state in which the state, not local governments, the state collects vehicle registration fees off of our cars and trucks and other vehicles, and then the gas packs as well, was collected by the state, and the money goes into the highway users' tax fund, and that fund supports the power department of transportation budget, and on a formula basis in state law for decades, that revenue is shared with counties like Adams County, and cities like Commerce City, counties and cities and towns all over the state, in lieu of us locally collecting that's taxes and vehicle registration fees, because that really wouldn't make a lot of sense. This is a statewide system, and it's a network of interconnected roads and streets, and it makes sense to have it this way. Now, the legislature and the state hasn't increased those fees on an incremental basis for a number of years, in fact, since nineteen eighty-seven. So last year, legislature raised those fees, uh, and it was very controversial, because it was a significant fee increase, generating about two-hundred-and-thirty, joining some give or take. And we and county government supporters supported that because that generated new revenues back to us to address some of the things I heard about earlier, in the area of what are you gonna do about power roads, what are you gonna do about this, that, and the other thing, county roads, city streets, bus systems. Uh, now, one oh one reveals that increase from last year, but it goes even farther and reduces those fees even more, to the extent that at the municipal level, we're gonna lose about thirty-seven to thirty-eight percent of our shared revenues from the state for city streets, uh, and, and that's in lieu of us having to raise those taxes locally. So in other words, for every dollar, just about, that Commerce City receives from the state, and these revenues, it can lock off about thirty-seven cents, thirty-eight cents, and that's not insignificant. We're very concerned about that. Uh, another thing I want to talk about, and then I'm gonna stop, because I've just, again, skimmed the surface. Uh, there is another part of one oh one that reduces something called the specific ownership tax. Specific ownership tax is in lieu of a property tax that local governments collect, the state, county treasurer collects, off of the value of an automobile, uh, based on the manufacturer, the suggested retail price, and blue book, and all of that, and then that revenue is shared back with counties, with the local governments in these other counties, based upon the percentage of property tax each of them collect in the entire county. Land sales close to five-hundred million dollars. Now that tax is off the horizon of state constitution, wasn't just made up the other day by a couple of us, it's been around since nineteen thirty-seven, and then that tax is virtually eliminated under one oh one. That's a lot of lost revenue that we're concerned about with local governments. And then in the area of sales taxes on, uh, on your phone bill, and cable, and, uh, cell phones, uh, those taxes and other fees are eliminated, um, and that is revenue that cities and, and counties collect, you'll hear more about some of those impacts in a minute. But one of the things I want to mention that we'll forget about, and we'll get lost in the shuffle on the debate, there's an exception, uh, on that restriction, for fees collected to support emergency nine-one-one response authorities. They're all over the state, the regional response authorities, that this specially authorized fee, a local government can assess, is collected to support those response authorities. The way the proposal was written, those fees are accepted, they're exempted out of these other limits, but they're frozen at two-thousand-nine levels. In other words, they can never be increased. Now, I work a lot with the fire response agencies around the state, and I talk a lot to these folks, the men and women that serve us in that capacity. This is a very serious problem, as service demands continually carry out emergency response, but under this measure, the fees can never be, uh, increased in, uh, in the future. Uh, all of these measures will be put forward by the proponents as major elements of tax relief, and that is certainly true, I do not dispute that. Opponents will argue, as I, uh, and, and the municipal leaders in opposition to these measures, I know, uh, addressed that up. At what cost? What's the, what are the impacts? You have to ask yourself that, in terms of how this stuff impacts, uh, the city and the county, and the level of government services, the school district, if you get. I have some materials that I'll leave out on the table, uh, afterwards, uh, but that's a quick overview of those three measures, amendment sixty, amendment sixty-one, and proposition one oh one. Let me stop, and, uh, I went a little more than I should have, but it's hard to really, uh, get through everything, and I take maybe one or two questions, I know the hour's getting long, there's some people have something burning, the one they asked. Yes, sir?
But this did roll back the paper to, it doesn't roll back paper to nineteen ninety-two?
Yes, I appreciate you bringing that up, there are a lot of things I didn't raise. Under another provision of the state constitution, if the voters approved the nineteen ninety-two called paper, one of the things that voters at the local government level can do, as affirmed by an opinion of the Colorado Supreme Court some years ago, is the following. If, as a city, or a fire protection district, or school district, or county, you have reached your constitutional limit on how much additional revenue you can collect from a property tax, where you have to refund it back to taxpayers, and the state does have to do that from time to time, you may recall, you are allowed, under, uh, some court opinions, to go back to the voters and say, listen, may we keep this additional revenue, and either put it in our general fund for our general operating purposes, or may we have your permission to spend it on a new, uh, fire station in, uh, the north part of town, or whatever the case may be. In most cases, at the municipal level, these have been strongly supported, I think we've seen about a ninety percent approval, uh, among the hundred, hundreds and hundreds of these questions asked by voters who live in cities and towns. Under number sixty, the ability to continue to do that in the future gets restricted, to only ask to keep those revenues for a very restricted period of time, and any priorly approved questions are eliminated. And that local government has to go back and recalculate its spending base based upon the time that it originally asked that question. So the will of the voters, to give permission to those local governments to do what they needed, is be eliminated retroactively. That, uh, is a major concern, the local governments throughout the state, I can assure you, and I hear about that more than I do just about anything else. That is what the general in the back was asking about. One more question, and I'm gonna shut up. Yes, sir?
Is it not a fact that the Hattler-Pawters of amendment sixty and sixty-one are unknown in Colorado, that have one knowledge of their identity?
Well-
Isn't this being negotiated right now?
Well, that's a, excellent question, thank you. I'm not much into whodunnings, uh, so, uh, I won't get into too much speculation, but your point is well taken. There is, in fact, if you may have read about it, uh, some, uh, litigation going on now in, uh, Denver District Court, over the manner in which the committee was formed, political action committee, which you call it in law, was formed to put these forward and add to them, and so there's, uh, some litigation now involving who was around, involved around those measures, uh, trying to gather some additional information and shed some light. There, there, there is some question about that, and, uh, I'll just leave it at that, and, uh, but, but that's the Reader Dodge's version.
Sam, are you gonna be around after he answers your question?
Yes.
You just gonna be around?
Yes.
As, as Sam says, these are very complicated issues. I would also urge you, when you get that blue book in the mail, the blue book is prepared by an organization called the Regis State Council, and I think they have to include the pros and the cons, please read that, there are various websites where you can go in and find out the pros and cons, and is there anybody here tonight that wants to give a different version of the facts than Sam is just giving us?
I don't wanna give a different version, I just have a comment that I'd like to ask if I'm still. I hear all over the, I'm telling you, they're saying the tax of that, uh, school.
Yes.
Um, we did not correct, that it was in nineteen ninety ten, it says one, the bachelor of either, so what are we gonna do, towards prisons, or?
Well, the issue that, uh, Lauren Consoin is raising is as follows, under the manner in which, uh, this works, uh, the state's budget, through the control of the general fund, will be constricted in such a manner, and I'll spare you all of the details, it will be spelled out in more detail in the blue book that you'll be getting, uh, to the point that, uh, their major area of expenditure in the future will have to be, uh, the School Finance Act, by virtue of this mandate, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in amendment sixty, as you say, constitution, uh, constitutional amendment, and that is what is being referred to, and I'll just leave it at that. Uh, that's a troubling aspect for, uh, the rest of us who look at other aspects of the state budget. I just, I wanna thank you for your attention and your interest in this, and if there are other questions, I'll hang around. So Kim and Kathy Kessler asked me to come to the, I appreciate it.
Sure, Sam, and in my opinion, there's nobody better in the state of Colorado to give that kind of an overview.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Jim, so.
Right, I'll turn it back over to Kathy.
Okay, and next I would like to have Ward Barnett from South Adams County Volunteer Fire Department, please come up and give your presentation, sir.
I'm doing, just see her.
I asked him that question, he could do a heck of a lot better job than you, I don't know.
Are you gonna want this mic?
No, I don't know. No, the guy who backed me said, uh, it's pretty polite, I don't know. Mine's short, because obviously we're real close, running out of time, and basically we're gonna talk to you about the impact through the fire district. South Adams County Fire District covers Commerce City, small parts of Lincoln, and some unincorporated areas of Adams County. So as a fire district, uh, our district is made up of predominantly volunteers, we're a volunteer fire department, we have some career daytime people in the fire prevention group maintenance, and those types of positions. So the eight stations that serve this area in our, in our district, and we have two stations in the last few years that we have built in the northern area, so we have four total stations up in the northern area, that is all run by volunteers. As you guys would see with the rollback, is we would essentially go from about three-point-two days on a year, and revenue, and taxes that you guys pay, provide, for us to provide your fire protection, we would run down to about seven-hundred to eight-hundred thousand dollars. So, so we would go from three-point-two days to about eight-hundred thousand dollars. So we have to roll back here, Mills, those nineteen ninety-two bills, we would lose out on those revenues from the taxes on automobiles, so all those revenues that are lost, uh, how do we make that up? So essentially, we would have to look at the minimal amount of paid staff we have, looking at laying off some of them, so, and essentially, what you're talking about from our standpoint, uh, keeping the lights on, keeping gas, we'll be there- point, keeping the lights on, keeping gas will be there for those types of things. We have a small debt which we will pay off next year. It's the person, only time our fire district was in fire district, that held the three-year debt, and our last year will be next year. That bought us four new apparatuses. Those four new apparatuses run out of the two new stations up here, and two of the older stations down in 46. So our impact is pretty huge. So it'll be, it will be very, very difficult for us to provide that fire protection, maintaining the equipment, and keeping it running for that type of impact for our district. So you did such a good job with the other one. Most of the money got covered, so any questions from, from me?
You might give them a perspective of where South Adams Fire State's revenue was compared to even the next. It's definitely, I think, a comparison to what you guys did down with your money. I think it's, this is a nice issue.
Our mill let me right now is 4.3. So we are the lowest mill let me district in the entire front range area. Some of the other districts in and around us run anywhere from 12 to 21 mills. So most of their money, though, if you look at it, goes where? It's passed out, we're paying payroll. So if we were in a career department with paid staff, you're typically looking at 80 to 85% of the money that comes in goes directly to salaries. You're not paying them salaries here because we're a volunteer department. So that's the big difference in the, so if we were to go to a career department, ultimately we will have to transition into a combination department if the community grows. There's just no way of hanging around that. But we see that way out in the future. So we are looking at federal grants and those types of things that have become available, actively pursuing multiple grants at this time, but those are the things that take time to get through. But the impact will be pretty huge, and we feel like we provide a genuine positive service for the amount of funding that you guys approved for us. We had a paper override, which means we can keep some of those monies from the past. That's what go away off. So we would have to give those money back, so that's even a margin of impact. Which is why our revenue would drop so drastically.
What is response time now in an emergency, and has that changed since I've turned it to a response?
Because we're volunteer, we would not lose street-level guys, essentially firefighters that respond. Our, because we're volunteer, our daytime response is longer, typically about six to eight minutes during daytime. And even weekends, it's going to be between four to six minutes. So, but yeah, response time does not affect it as much as it would a career department. So both career departments, they're talking closing fire stations and those type of things, which really impact their ability to respond.
Even though the response times may affect it, are there other things that are evaluated by the insurance company within the fire district, determine insurance rates of property?
Over the short term, probably not overall negative impact, because the impacts will come in as your equipment out over, you couldn't keep things up, your maintenance would fall apart, you could test your equipment, you could do all those things. So short term, one to two years, probably not a negative impact. After that, these things stay in effect, and the vote handle changes if it did in effect. It would have huge impact to property values if things are falling out on the insurance side of it.
Here's someone from the Water District here. Jim Jones, the Executive Director of the Water District. Can you tell us what the effect this might have on our water bills?
Right. Sam did a really good job of explaining, we're operated and managed from, from a modern sewer side. So what that means is, you know, Amendment 60, what that means is we have $330 million of asset. All that becomes tax burden. So at the lowest, the best, you know, once we do the assessment, figure out what that $330 million really gets taxed at, the lowest value, we're going to start paying $1.5 million property tax a year. That's not something we're paying now. Right now, all that public property, they're your properties, they're not ours, and we feel we shouldn't do that. If it gets, if that passes, and we have to pay the property taxes, we think that'll be a little bit $5 million in that of our bottom line, our expenses. What that means to me is that's about 16% annual increase when you go out in sewer business. So that's the first thing. 61, again, because we're a water district, we built a lot of facilities like water plants, ground for storage, and those, concrete, storage tanks, pump stations, type of, a lot of these things are built the last 50 to 100 years. So it's just like your house. You want to go out and pay cash for that big investment, or mostly can't afford to do that, we're going to take it out of the mortgage, and we're going to pay it over 30 years. We do the same thing on the water and fixing business. It makes more sense for us to finance those on 20, 30, up to 50-year loans, so we can spread those costs out over, not only the existing customer base, but for our future customers. New customers coming on, they pay their capacity through connection fees, they pay their, their way. So the burden is not on the existing customer base. We try to spread it out over a number of years, so that all end-to-end customers all pay their fair share on that. And if this happens, two things happen to us. We have to go a little more. We can't just issue revenue longer than we can now. For example, we have a, an agreement with Denver Water, where we owe them $10 million to finish paying for a 4,000 acre foot water supply project, $65 million project. Thankfully, we've already paid for 55 years. The last $10 million, we have to pay by 2014. So if we pay it, pay it off by 2014, that means we have a burden on our customers of about $2 million a year. If you refinance that and do it in 20 years, now that's then over $800,000 annual burden on our customers, and we don't have to have as big a rate increase, and we can, that's the whole deal for them to go through.
How much will that cost in interest?
The bond issue? It would be a bond of $10 million, it would be about $16 million total over the 20, or the 20 years. But again, the simple prospect is, you know, we don't have a huge impact on our customers, so that's why we look at doing their part and be more profitably. So that's one thing. And then 101, it doesn't have a big impact on us. We only get about $120,000 a year, and some of it was extra fees that are collected, can be up the backs of the, but again, if that goes away, it's a revenue source that we have, if you put that with us, we have to try to cut expenses or figure out how to be supplementing those costs in. So again, Sam did great job of explaining over the, you know, we pass, we use a lot of revenue sources, and we have to figure out how, how we reduce those revenue sources and continue to provide water needs for our citizens.
Resources, inside of the right of it. You want to consider.
We, step right up here to the water area. Right now, back in the late 90s, we had a developer come to us and say, "We'd like to start a new RC for this out in the military area of the service area." And at that point, we didn't have money in the bank, and said, "We can't afford to do that." So the developer partnered up with the city, the city formed what's called the General Improvement District to the point of destruction. So we maintain that system. The General Improvement District owns or is compelled to pay for, once it's paid for, they need all of that.
Okay, thank you, Jim, and you'll be around for questions afterwards. Okay, next I would like to have Jason Leslie from the City of Commerce City Finance Department come up, please.
I'll try not using my mic. Well, cut space on is the direct impact. We, we'll maybe have to have, just need to kind of keep it brief, because I can't really, or, the immediate one would be with 61, that has to regard, women on our debt, and now we have to pay back the debt. Currently, with the current debt we have outstanding, we'd not be able to issue a debt this past year, it's still coming in, and that would be a $3 million bond. So just putting to a kind of indication of what Tomlinson mentioned, is how we could cost to complain on that order to go out power roads. To get $3 million to come in, it's not going to be too much for that. The major impact of fee would help with 101, and that would push our revenue gate. Some of the revenue, the impact would be immediate, probably just staggered over four years. So in 2011, the increase was 2.6 million out of our general fund revenue, and by 2014, it was 2.46. So to put that in kind of perspective, by 2014, that 2.46 did drop to 15% of our prison budget, and that, you know, right about there, you'd be like, the entire price for representation, all the products on the, or the program would be, kind of have lots of conditions that have that on the stage. That's just the main thing there. I think there was, if you tell anyone that, questions, but Chad, you agree to it by now?
Correct. Okay. Well, next, I guess I would ask Larry Pace, our Executive Commissioner, to come up and give us the impact that this could have on Adams County.
I'm going to be fairly brief with this. We want to hit and compile what the impact and going to be to the council, and how resolution would basically go ahead, or we have to support the three, two amendments in the proposition at all. We figured out that, basically, which is calculated by our finance staff, that if they pass the first year, the impact is going to be greater than 10% of our general operating budget, which is approximately $163 million. So right there, you see that, that's going to give us a head of about $70 million, yes, right off the income. We calculated that if indeed we go to 2014, the hit is going to be 33 and a quarter million dollars to the county government. And so the county government, basically, is in arm with the state. We administer the policy of the state. In other, we are kind of like court masters in a way, Medicaid and a few of those others, they come to the, to the pass through, they come to the county, and we then go ahead and administer this to the, to the, the individual lines who are to be the recipient. With regard to corrections and human services, we calculated that it would be $44 million to the, to the county that would be the impact. One thing you've got to know about this is the fact that we use these to leverage federal dollars. So here we have $44 million that's gone, period. So in corrections, we do get reimbursements from corrections, color department from corrections, based on inmates who are held in our financial center in 2013. We also find that Medicaid and all the rest, we administer. So we can go ahead and then, and get federal dollars that will go ahead and give us, provide better human services for our citizens. So if you want to calculate, 30, about 33 million, 44 million, start adding this up, start giving some $80 million gifts to the county government, and of course, those are direct services to the citizens of Adams County. So that's, that's basically, that's the balance regarding to Adams County, the impact to the county. Any questions?
Yes. It sounds like the proposed law means that the people who still, that who are being physically responsible for management, is there a thing that the county has done over the last couple of years to cut back with the tax?
Absolutely. When we went ahead and prepared the 2010 budget, we went to our elected officials, and the elected officials, their budgets are approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And we said to them that they're wishing a 5% reduction in their budget. We also went to our directors, 17 directors in the county. They also went ahead and reduced their budgets by 5%. Again, '09, we were about 167,2, so was, was our general operating budget. In '10, it went down to 163. So we've cut our budget by 3.2 million dollars in Adams County. Right today, we, we've had our preliminary budget hearings, and we are looking, you know, we have forecasts to what it's going, what it's going to mean to them. So we're looking out to 2014. We know that these things are on six-year cycles with regard to the downturn, and I'm not sure as to, but the last quarter of '07, when the downturn started, okay, then reject out six years as to when we're going to start seeing a downturn. So, yes, go ahead.
Just to follow, I know that if I was the issue, I really want to go against these amendments. I would say, well, we could have cut from the past to bring this into the line of the economy, right? You have a specific example, you said you're staying 5% tax for a budget, but something that would have cut.
Okay. Yeah, so we went ahead, and we took two departments, and we basically collapsed them, merged them into one. This, this was the Human Development Department, Workforce Development, that sort of thing, and Social Services, and now it's called the Department of Human Services. And that was, had a savings of $370,000. So, yes, go ahead.
Now, the, the reason you're trying to tax, okay, you keep saying, how do you, give me like a job or a little business or, is there any upside to this? I mean, will we have an influx of people from other state wanting to live here because we have low taxes or?
Just the reverse. Just the reverse. They, it's not going to be a business, kind of like, in barn. I think you heard them say, 73,000 jobs gone, as far as, as far as the, um...
Can you prove that?
No, that's the estimate. That's, yes. Okay, go ahead with the literature, it's going to say that. So that's basically what they have been predicting, is...
Then it goes back to the same thing. You're missing the point. The point is, is government has been spending and spending and spending, and you have not taken us into, into that situation. You've done it all on your own, and this is the only way that the taxpayer has to come back and, and, and has some type of leverage with, with the political process. The politicians aren't listening, none of you. You don't want to dig for money. No, no. The gentleman there that spoke so broadly was great, but he said, "We created," something used the words, "we originated some new income with the, with the, with the license increase." Where do I originate new income in my life, like you did with the, with the licenses?
There was a question.
Well, okay, let's send you this.
I, I, I'm not going to vote for it, but I'm sure, all I want to do is, is point
out why these, why these amendments are coming up.
Okay, I understand what your point is. With regard to Adams County, Board of County Commissioners, Adams County basically went against the mayors of this, of this county. We, I was a Dr. Cobb, every regional council government, when the proponents are actually offered this, were presenting it, and I basically made a comment that this is an turnaround paper with regard to fees and penalties on the 101. And I was, was bucked, accused by a mayor who said, "Now, that's representative government." So if you're looking at the Board of County Commissioners, we were very concerned, there's a downturn in the economy. This is not the time to file fees and penalties on the citizens. So, yes, indeed, with regard to our block office, I'm listening. The bridges are crumbling, the roads are in tremendous disrepair. So, you know, play, play either way, any way you want to play.
How do you talk to the county council?
What's that?
How do you talk to the side of the county?
How do you talk to part of the side of the county?
Um, excuse me, um, are you going to be around, Larry?
Yes, I will.
Because we, we are already like a half hour behind, and, uh, sir, you can ask him that question afterwards, okay? Um, now I would like to introduce Heather Cobb, um, from Adams County School District, twenty-seven J.
Thank you. Um, my name's Heather Cobb, I'm the chief, I'm a school district, one of our buildings that you're in right now. Um, I've been here a couple months, I, I hate to mention, but we have a little speed up for eighteen years, so know a little bit about the state, but I wanted to touch on three issues. Um, on sixty, we calculated and not see any impact, or I'm not going to say, but, um, property tax, we estimate that about two point eight million for school, about thirteen point four million dollars on purchase, it does require state to backfill. Um, I am not optimistic with my fifteen years of state government that that was possible, but that is a provision of legislation. We have calculated that to be about a thousand dollars per student reduction for the school district. At a time it was growing, it was about over about five point six percent per year, or eight hundred percent per year, so we're concerned, um, about the situation. The other piece of it is, um, the ability to debt, um, we should debt for your building, one right down the street, high school, um, pretty much every building that your children or grandchildren attend, we should debt for, this would eliminate our willingness to do that, we would break the restrictions down, it would take thirteen years to get off, but to get to the new limit, we can set, and we estimate another ten, fifteen years before we would be able after that to issue debt for your building. Once we were to issue that debt, we were required to do that debt off in ten years, instead of the position of twenty years, over, at a time where we're running a set of twenty, a hundred and a thousand students per year. And I'm not sure at this time if that were to pass, but it would, um, for the schools that we currently have available right now, because that's what we restrict us to, is the current school buildings that we have in the district now, is what we would have for about the next ten to fifteen years. So, highlight those three areas, Sandy did a great job, I'm going out, but, um, she's done a great job. Um, I do have some handouts, and I'll talk about the, the progress on that, um, and most of what's in there, though, location of a group that should come out and say, the group is currently available on, I just did a town with West Side, the final version of that, it should be in that.
Heather, I've got a, I heard that, you know who Ken Dela is?
Yeah.
The director of the fire association's school boards, and what he told, uh, the group on this about a month ago, said, uh, if these pass, particularly sixty-one, uh, there will be ten school districts in the state that will have to shut their doors about the second week of November, and not open up again until, uh, March or April, because the first part of the year, a lot of school districts are very cash poor, I don't think twenty-seven J is included in that probably, but...
We're not in one of the ten, then, have come, uh, talked to the district about that, but February is our lowest month, and some of the school districts have discussed the fact that we may have to change the cycle, so that the doors would be closed during the January, February, March timeframe, and the revenue collection came in versus being, you know, offered this summer, so we would have to, we would have to...
Because what has happened in the past is that the state has been able to loan these school districts money to get them through that two or three-month period. The sixty-one passes, the state can no longer loan money right there. So, they will have to shut their doors, about ten school districts, I'm sure the twenty-seven J, Cherry Creek, shut their doors. But there'll be about ten, uh, school districts that are going to shut down until March or April.
Well, and, and part of what we don't know, do not know, is because of that reduction for people, the thousand dollars, we could be in that line, we're not in that line now, but it could push us over that level to be in that line, where we would not have enough money to pay our bills in the January and March.
Just for a reading.
Thank you, very much.
You'll be around after?
I will.
I guess next is, uh, Lieutenant Cabbage, still here?
Yeah.
Give us some impact about, what the impact of sixty, sixty-one, and one-on-one will have on our police service, if they have.
We're talking about that. Not prepared.
Do you know, do you know what, uh, the budget of the police department would be cut? Yeah, the chief told me it was about...
I think this is about the substation, is what he was asking me to talk about. Community update.
We have, uh, two of the council members here tonight, Dominic, do you have anything you'd like to state to this audience?
Um, I'll just quickly introduce myself, I don't know a lot of you. Um, my name's Dominic Moreno, I represent Ward One, which is down in the southern part of the city, uh, right by the dog track, uh, was born and raised in Commerce City, and, uh, came back and, and was elected to come from November, so, um, obviously, I, I don't represent the area up here, but, uh, I am very aware of the issues here, and I'd be more than well, uh, more than willing to listen to any concerns that you have, so if you do have any, please always feel free to contact me, and I have parts tonight if any of you would like to speak.
I'd like to have that Dominic, weren't you the youngest person to ever be elected to the Commerce City City Council? Dominic is twenty-five. He graduated as a valedictorian at Adams City High School, in two thousand and three, went off to Washington DC and went to George Washington University. But George, I'm sorry, I can't stand it, Georgetown, and, uh, I guess she graduated from there in oh-eight, is that right? Then went through the council in, uh, November of oh-nine, and three years, and enjoyed having a part of the council. How many have you ever been to a council meeting? I mean, they're, they're, I must have been pretty entertaining for you. I mean, now you can even get them on your computer, so there's no excuse for that, it's better than, uh, reality TV, but, uh, I never watched any of it. But, uh, do we have anybody else? Sadie Carson, would you like to say something?
Hi, thank all of you for coming, I'm Sadie Carson, Ward Three, which is near the run, Bill Creek, through your neighborhood, and, uh, I love to see the participation up here, um, and I'm not giving you my eight, even though we tell you it's darning. So, then, no, it, it, I, it was well turned out tonight, so thank you for coming, um, and as Dominic stated, uh, we're here for you to ask any questions of any of the council, um, and, and I think you've got a, a great group up here, does anything, and thank you for coming in and listening, and thank you for participating with you.
Hey, has everybody filled in your email address on those sheets of paper, so we can get, um, email this, and it would be a little more often and maybe a little better?
Oh, you have cookies, you can...
Right, yeah, it's still, it's still good deal here, right, so, I want to thank all of you for coming, I think we've had a good turnout tonight, and, uh, we really appreciate that, same with you. We're going to kind of do this about one Saturday for six months, every six months, and now we're going to have a whole town hall meeting, where everybody in the city will be invited, because everybody in the city is a member of the county, but we won't be notified if people are in Ward Two. Thank you very much.